So, welcome to school committee meeting. And so I'll be the vice chair, taking over for Rich Young, who cannot be here today. We're also waiting on Brian Givernoni. He will not be... He will be coming in later. So we're gonna take some items out of order that don't require any voting and just get through that part of the meeting. Okay, so the first order of business is pledge allegiance.
Please rise if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next order of business is for public comment. If anybody in the audience wishes to bring up something that's on tonight's agenda. Seeing no one. Recognition. Just to let people know, we did receive two checks. One from Wayne Christian, doing business as Christians Appliance. And one from the Unitarian Universal Society of Middleborough. Wayne's check was $523. The first UU society was $668. And these are both going to pay for overdue lunch balances at the HBB Berkland and MKG complex. So anybody, so people who are having trouble paying for lunches, these checks will help cover them. So thank you to Wayne Christian and the UU Society of Middleborough. Next on the agenda was a presentation by the YMCA. However, because Brian's been involved with the negotiations, we would like him to be here for that, and he's on his way. So we're gonna come back to that later. Student report from student representative Owen.
A big thank you to Chase Holio, Josh Young, Ryan Perry, and Sidney Jutres for representing Middleborough well at Boys State and Girls State. Chris Cogan was Middleborough's representative at MA HOBE Leadership Conference a couple of weekends ago and was able to hone his leadership skills. Jade Almodovar represented Middleborough High School at the Math Star Leadership Conference. Big thank you to Jade. Congratulations to the softball team and all of their spring sports teams for great seasons. It's been great to watch you all compete. Seventeen students will make the flight to Minnesota for the annual NASC conference. I look forward to a great week. And tomorrow is the second day of our final exams for Block Three and Four for second semester. To all students, let's finish the year strong. And a thank you to all teachers and faculty across the district. All the amazing things that occur would not be possible without your diligent work. A special note of thank you to all the retiring teachers for their dedication to the students of Middleborough. Thank you.
Proceed with the YMCA presentation at this point. Sorry. We skipped over the YMCA until you came. Oh, I'm sorry. This is Sue Okalita and Julie Kennedy from the Y. We just signed a one-year agreement for them to run our, the before-school, after-school programs at the complex, and they're here to give a presentation on their program. And so I'll turn it over to you.
For those of you who don't know me, I want to introduce myself. My name's Susan Okalita. I'm the vice president overseeing the Middleborough and the central branches of the Old Colony YMCA. And I want to thank you for allowing us to come here this evening and putting us on the agenda, so we appreciate that. But before we start the presentation, I know, I think on the last board minutes, the Nichols Middle School was down at Camp Amicus today for their field day. So they had an amazing day. You couldn't ask for better weather. They were able to do some team building on the ropes course. They went canoeing, archery, and they just had a great time. So, thank you.
Very positive reports.
So thank you for allowing them to participate in that. But as you can see on our slideshow, we've been in the Middleborough Public Schools since 2001. And in preparation for September, we'd like to start to have a conversation with you and make sure that we align with you as a partner priorities that the schools have to better serve our children and families in our community. At this time, I know Greg just introduced Julie, but Julie Kennedy is our Associate Executive Director. So she's gonna kind of bring you through the slideshow to give you an overview of our school age program.
Okay. Thank you, Sue. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Superintendent Lynch, and Mrs. Piattelli, and the rest of the school committee. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak with all of you tonight in regard to our school age programs here at Middleborough. So this past year, we have put in place a new leadership team with our school age programs. We have a new school age director. Her name is Alisa Rosie Rose, as we like to call her, and many of you may know her or have seen her around in our programs. And then we also have Mel Sylvia, who's our full-time lead psych coordinator tonight, and she is here in the audience tonight. And many of you probably see her smiling face over at the MKG program. So some of our staff requirements are, as you can see up here, all of our staff training requirements, they have a minimum of 20 hours per year. And that's just the minimum. Many of them go over that, including all of the EEC requirements, and then in addition to all of our YMCA training requirements that we have as well. So hiring with safety is an absolute top priority with us at the YMCA. So we Cory and Sorry all of our staff members, we do fingerprinting through EEC, and we do background checks, reference checks. We do all of that for everybody that works and employs with the Y. In addition to all of the mandatory trainings, first aid, CPR, intro to EEC, a medication training, and so many more that I'm not listing here tonight, but there's a lot. So just a little bit of background on where our staff are coming from. Many of them are pursuing careers in education or some sort of human service field as well. In addition to our school age team, they meet regularly on a regular basis throughout the year with our senior vice president, Kim Moran, who is also in the audience tonight. So Kim and her leadership team works with the staff to ensure all of our 48 sites that we run throughout the southeastern Massachusetts are in compliant with EEC regulations through licensing, evaluating, establishing best practices for everything that we need to run in our before and after-school programs. And a huge focus of that planning and training that they do every month is curriculum. So at our Y, we have our major curriculum commitment to learning. So we want to align our curriculum with the school priorities, and we are open to how we can better do that through an educational lens as well. Currently, our programs run a weekly curriculum in our theme-based. On a weekly basis, the site will cover at least two of the core areas, as you can see up here, such as literacy and math, science, arts, and humanities, or any of the other character development, asset development as well. So on a daily basis, this is a little typical schedule that you might find at, well, you do find at all of our after-school programs. So on a daily basis, you'll find the after-school sites incorporating something that we call Y Chat Time. Where the staff discuss the theme of the day, and they'll have a question for the kids to share, and they'll discuss, and just a chance for them to open up and get to learn to know one another in a different way, and maybe get them thinking about some different opportunities and different ways to learn. So we always have snack in the afternoon, and we provide breakfast in the morning care as well. We do follow something called HEPA guidelines, which is, it's called, it stands for healthy eating and physical activity. This was a Y of the USA Initiative that our Y is committed to. So it is something that we do follow in our programs, all of our programs, not just before and after-school programs, but everything as well. So in addition to that, we also have a daily physical education activity component for at least 30 minutes, and weather permitting, every day we will get outside. So here's just a few, these are the current kids in our program right now. This is at the MKG site in particular. They're doing a science activity on, it was a density project. I did want to share, too, the MKG site, one of their highlights of their, one of their programs that they did, a service learning project, and they did a school-wide recycling after-school. So Mel, who is out there in the audience, spent time with the kids in the after-school program and taught them about service learning and different ways to recycle and what they can do to help make their school a better place in their community. So our approach at the Y in providing high standard care is by using various evidence-based outcomes, as you can see, measurements through youth development, building relationships, and two-generational programming. So communication, this is a big, big goal of ours to ensure that we are communicating to our parents, teachers, schools, principals, you guys, as best as we can as well. So we strive to have open communication and consistency between homeschool and the Y, and we believe this is really important to providing high-quality care and providing a strong foundation for the students to grow into productive young adults in our community. And we are also excited, we have piloted various text messaging options. We did it at camp last summer. We're implementing it now in some of our other areas, and we are excited to also have this as an opportunity for our before and after-school families as well. So parent engagement, so we're here for the parents and the families and the children in our community. Our number-one goal is to ensure that the children are receiving safe and safe care and that they're happy. And we want to support our parents as well in any way that we can. We're always here to help them. This year in particular, we were fortunate to work a lot with Meg Quark, the Family Resource Coordinator for the Middleborough Schools. In various ways, she's reaching out, we've helped her with providing memberships to the families in the schools, to the, back to the Y, to providing before and after care, or most recently, I think I'm in communication with Mel, I mean, Meg, pretty much on a daily basis at this point in regard to summer camp and the needs of the children in the schools. So it's been a great collaboration to have her in helping connect us to some more families that are in need and help meet those needs of those families, whether it's through, like I said, summer camp, or after-school care, or memberships to the Y. So we've also, this past year, and since we've been able to have this collaboration with the school, we've provided a lot of in-kind wraparound services. Babysitting during various PTO meetings, parent-teacher conferences, anything that the school district may need, we are here, we're able to provide that. We've done some of the grandparent workshops that the school has been able to provide as well. We've been there to help provide that babysitting for them as well. In addition, we do have some different various faculty trainings that we are open and able to do as well. We have offered some of these in the community. Most recently, we've been in several different churches and the Middleborough Matters Group with teaching the Darkness to Light, which is the child sexual abuse prevention training. But that's something that we can also do and is available to the faculty here as well. So I touched upon this a little bit earlier, but just our, in regard to parent engagement and our, some of our main goals in our parent surveys, we do do, we do provide parent surveys on a yearly basis. So these are just some pictures of some of our kids in our after-school program, and as you can see, they're pretty happy. And these, this year's survey results indicated that 100% of our parents agree that the site is a safe environment. Some more fun. 95% of the parents have indicated that staff have given them help and support when needed. And 95% have reported that their children are made to feel welcome and comfortable in our programs. And so like I said earlier, our main focus is parent satisfaction and ensuring that the children are happy and safe in our programs. So each of our sites do have some sort of library or book corners. This was just one of our sites that had some after-school book club going on. They developed a read box, and they made their own little library. So the assistance with homework is very helpful to me and my child. My children love to do the projects that they do. This was apparent testimonial from our surveys that we did this past year as well. Some happy faces of the children in our programs currently. The people that work with the kids are awesome. And I'm gonna turn it back over to Sue.
Yeah. So just to kind of wrap up, just want to thank you for the opportunity to present this evening, and just to remind you that the Old Colony Y continues our value partnership for the Middle, with the Middleborough Public Schools and committed to meeting the needs of children and families in our community. So at this point, if there are any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer them. And, okay?
Any committee members have any questions? I just have a couple, just one question. What does two-generational programming, what does that mean?
So our focus is, so when a parent or a child comes into our, into our Y, we want to focus on the whole family, not just that child and providing that before and after school care for them. We're also looking at the whole family. So what can we do with the mom? What can we do with dad? What can we do with the rest of the family as well and incorporate them and engage them as much as we can into our programs and the Y.
And my second question was more from a personal experience. I have two daughters, and they went through HBB Berkland, and they were in the program, not last year, but I think my youngest was two years ago. So I don't remember seeing some of the stuff. So is this new things that you've implemented this past year? Because I don't recognize some of it, yeah.
Yeah. So I wouldn't say it's necessarily new. I think we have made some changes in some leadership situations and enhanced some of the things that we needed to enhance.
Because, I mean, the way you describe it sounds very good.
Yeah.
I just, from personal experience, I don't remember seeing some of that happening, but it sounds good.
Yeah.
Any questions? Over there? All right, well, thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much for your time. We really appreciate it.
So we can pick back up, we're at the reports from school committee members. Any members have a report they'd like to give?
I missed part of Owen's piece. I apologize for being late, but the other night I was able to, able to attend that, the athletic, spring athletic awards, where everyone gets their letters. And it included the, at the high school, it was at the high school, but it included the middle school, which was, was great. My daughter actually participates here on the middle school. But there were some 350 students that were recognized for participating, and I thought that was just outstanding. And then the, the South Shore League All-Stars, some of these people with sportsmanship awards, I loved that. I love when I, when I see that. I sit there and I get a smile on my face because it's not just, it's about achieving, you achieve it in the school, you achieve, and so seniors that came back that got their letters after the fact, I mean, they're gone. They don't have to come back. I think that's great when they come back, so they're part of our community, and I think that's just awesome. So it was, that was Tuesday night, it was just a great night, and then they had ice cream afterwards, just such a fun night. So I look forward to those each seasons. It's a great event.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I might, that's something Ryan Sylvia added this year involving Nichols Middle School and the high school, and doing an entire event for the entire school, certainly encouraged by Mr. Brandigan. He went to Mr. Brandigan with a plan, and it was certainly supported by the high school. So great to see, and certainly will continue, I think, there's no doubt about it. Pack toast, yeah, great. And ice cream after, right?
So next up is the MEA report. Mr. Frank Catino?
I look forward to your tie. Well, I can't wear a tie all the time. Doesn't, it doesn't go with a polo shirt very well, you know? So I was trying to dress more casual today, and tomorrow it's gonna be a polo shirt, too, Well, as Owen had said, you know, tomorrow's the last day of finals at the high school, so half-day and then time to correct a lot of stuff, so just a couple of days away. And hopefully, less snow next year. Or maybe we can explore some alternative plans. There is the possibility that some of my members had asked about, something known as alternative, now if I can remember the name of it. It had a term that they used to call blizzard bags, where the students would do meaningful work and you could forego some of the snow days by having the students complete work instead. And where we're fast approaching, at least at the secondary levels, one-to-one with electronic devices and the advent of things like Google Classroom, it becomes a lot more feasible to actually accomplish such a thing, so might be something we could look into. I know that, that superintendents had received information about that possibility, so maybe we can consider something along those lines.
Mr. Chair, I might.
I did receive your email yesterday, Frank. I haven't had a chance to respond to it, but the issues that superintendents have had, I would share with you and school boards in the past, is that it, there are repercussions that go beyond the teachers' union. There are repercussions that go to the ESPs, to bus drivers, to when you start cutting down school days, you start cutting down pay for those people who are hourly employees, cafeteria income, things like childcare programs. There are a lot of things that impacted when you take 184 days and you start, or 180 days, and you start reducing it days at a time. So it has to be something that really has to be examined at length and agreed upon by all of the, all of the involved employees, I would say.
No, I, I fully understand that. I've actually read all of the stuff that was there and went through a lot of the resources. Did some research as to what some of the school districts have been doing as far as in this regard, and, you know, there's, there is a lot of stuff. And it's not something that school committees are supposed to just say, well, let's just do it. It has to be a lot of discussions. It's, it's at least a year's worth of preparation in order to get something together for it. But the earlier you start to think about it, the better chance you have to actually implement something like that and mitigate some of the additional concerns that may rise up. You come up with a plan, but if we run out of days, what do we do? Have school on Saturdays? Cancel the April vacation?
Alternatives, all alternatives. The value of a full school day, we can debate that.
And I know some North Shore committees had to do those things this year.
Yeah, and a lot of them have, a lot of them have presentations out there that you can look at concerning these, this idea of alternative learning days, so.
Absolutely. Through you again, Mr. Chair.
It's not saying that we were gonna do something like that. I just wanted to at least, you know, put it out in a public forum, that that is a possibility that the town or that the school district can consider. And again, like you said, there's a lot more to it than just, let's just do this. But you can't start something like that without the conversation.
We can talk about things like starting earlier. We can talk about things like eliminating the Wednesday before Thanksgiving as part of negotiations. Some of those things that have brought us to the point where we're Tuesday, June 26th, are some things that we can control at the school committee level in terms of just rescheduling the 180 days, so.
A combined one-week March vacation rather than a February and an April. There's other possibilities.
That's been tried before, too, but we can have those discussions.
Well, it's just things that you can consider. All things should be on the table as far as that goes if we're trying to avoid bumping into the end of the fiscal year, which we can't go past. And this year, we're just three days away. We've been closer than that before. And, you know, we negotiated the ability to start before Labor Day.
Yep.
We've only done it once with the students. I've had teachers ask why.
And that may be something that we do again.
Anyway, the only other thing that I would like to say, and that's not on your agenda as far as resignations at the high school, Suzie Kubik is gonna be leaving the high school staff, and I know that she is, she's a colleague of mine. Helped bring her into the district when I was a department chair for the math department and worked a lot with her through the time when she even was the Presidential Award winner for math teaching, and she will be sorely missed. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Okay, so next up is the superintendent's report. Mr. Lynch?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to invite Mr. Paul Brandigan down to the table. Mr. Brandigan has a number of items on today's agenda, and if I could indulge the committee to change the order up a little bit, and items, item five, if we could take that out of order and put that right underneath number two, if we could, just so that he can talk about a couple of field trips that are out of state that need action by the committee while he's at the chair, if that's okay with the, with the chair and with the board, so. Thank you. Mr. Brandigan, welcome. Just had a busy, busy month. It ended, I sort of last night with the retirement party of a number of faculty members from the district, including John Cardoza, who's a district-wide ELL person, but good time was had by all, and thank you for organizing that, so without further ado. Mr. Brandigan.
So the first item on the agenda is just the sought approval of the committee of our 2018-19 student handbook. It's imperative that we cannot go to print until you approve it. And the reason why that we're here tonight is because it allows for us to make sure we can have the books in hand before the end of the summer. You'll note in the addendum document that we sent to you this week that there's very little changes to the handbook besides the updating that is done. However, just, it'd be important for me to just take you through just a few quick items in it so that it can just be in the narrative of the updates that are there. All of the updated dates are in the book in terms of just end-of-term and all of those kinds of things as well. Updating the district mission statement to reflect the current practice and the vision of the district. You're gonna notice the fact that we needed to align our field trip permission slips to what actually is in the handbook in terms of student travel. So for example, we added to the permission slips, the word vaping is prohibited, as well as obviously bringing a weapon on a school-sponsored function. But we needed to make sure that was aligned in the handbook as well. So when the student gets a permission slip to go on a trip, it's aligning perfectly with what's in the handbook as well. And number four, we just needed to update the graduation requirements because we now have the community service requirement, and with the, with this year's grade coming in of class of 2022, we will have three grades that are required to complete those service hours. So we needed to make sure that was reflected in the requirements as well as archive project, which you know the fact with the class of 2021, we launched that Senior Capstone, for lack of a better word, program that our seniors, or this year's ninth graders will have to do when they're a senior, and that that will continue with the class of 2022. So that is reflected in there. We needed to delete the Middleborough High School Drivers Education Program because we had that in that, in the booklet repeatedly, and when we caught it, we needed to make sure that came out because that's no longer in use. It's now outsourced to a private company, as you know. Number six, we just really needed to, we've had a lot of discussion as a faculty about really just trends that we're seeing and how to combat those trends. And that one of the things that we find that we are challenged by is plagiarism and cheating, which I think is just a nature of any high school in, everywhere. But how we are responding to that needed to have a little bit more of a bite. And one of the things that we were noting is that you may have isolated scenarios where a teacher may experience a student cheating, and then he or she is choosing to deal with that in a classroom level, which seems to happen a lot. But then there's also becomes a scenario where we don't know whether or not is it isolated in that one moment, and that student just made a really poor decision. Or is it something we're seeing trends happening all over the place? Has the student had been repeated offenses, and we don't have the ability to track that? So part of what you see in the, in the new language is that classroom teachers will notify the student's parents or guardian, which is an expectation that they would do that, as well as school administration. And each incident of plagiarism will be noted in Aspen. And the reasoning for that is, is that it may just be a one moment in time, and then we know that the student learned a lesson, and the importance and the danger of doing that, and we move forward. However, if it is something that is a repeated action, it allows for us then to be able to look at actually, well, what kind of consequences can we engage as well? And really, how does that impact a student's eligibility in the honor societies and such like that? So we needed to make sure we could begin our own tracking of that to ensure the fact that we were able to navigate if it was a significant issue, or is it just a moment in time? And then also, you'll notice the fact that the National Honor Society, as you know, to have a charter of National Honor Society, you have to have very strict rules that go along with that. And in order to maintain your charter, your organization must maintain service hours as one of the pillars of NHS. And albeit that our students in National Honor Society were doing it, we never had it written that they must. So our advisors came forward to say, we want to create a tracking sheet for NHS members that they're showing their 10 hours of service work, which when you look at what these students are doing... are doing in relation to all the other organizations in the school, it's really an easy, um, opportunity for them. However, we needed to make sure it was published that they have to do those hours. So you're gonna notice that as well. We deleted, updated our co-curricular offerings and deleted programs that we no longer are offering. We added our Seachem supporters and the art club, which are the new co-curricular offerings that launched this year, as well as with excitement adding in the athletic pages of the unified basketball in the fall, Bachi, and with the anticipated, um, track and field that would be happening in the, um, spring as well. You'll notice the fact that it says unified Bachi twice, but in the program, in the handbook, it would show track and field. That's just a typo. I just realized, my apologies. Um, and then lastly, just the last few items, um, we wanted to make sure the fact that for our athletic part of the handbook, it was just really looking at when student athletes are missing a practice and they're never notifying the coach of that missed practice. And that we're finding a little bit of an uptick in just some aspects where students just weren't coming and there needed to be some consequence or just some in reaction to that and their responsibility of communication to their coach or in, in terms, their families to the coach as well. And then up, ultimately updating the memorandum of understanding between the superintendent and the chief of police, which we do every year. And then lastly, we just really did some finessing of the section of the handbook of reporting suspicion of child abuse and neglect. When you look at actually our current pr- practice, it's very clear of what needs to be done. However, what we needed to do is really make sure that it, it is empowering a faculty member or any school employee to understand what their, what their protocols must be. And the language that you see in your addendum document is exactly what will go in. It's complementing what's already there, but it's just making it much more thorough and robust. And those are the major revisions. If I will, if I may say, you will start to find, starting in the upcoming school year for the nineteen twenty and twenty twenty-one handbook, um, we're beginning to take this document that has been our document that has served us well in the current high school and that the goal is started in the fall, it will become part of the protocols now to start really doing some real analysis of these documents to ensure that we can begin the transition into a new building. So you may find as we move forward that the addendums that you're seeing will become very different, um, just based upon what it's gonna look like going into a new school. So I can entertain any comments or questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On item six, where the cheating plagiarism, it's gonna be put into Aspen. At that point, it'll be permanently recorded. Um, when the, when they send something home to the parents, will it also say that in that letter, hopefully that, um, that this notation will go into Aspen so that the parents know?
Yeah, and, and many times too, that there are things that will go into that, like if there could be a, a discipline issue that goes into Aspen. Um, and it always is communicated with the parent as well, but it stays there, that it's not something that is sent out, off to other places. And that I think would be the context of really the, that as well. But yes, the parents would be notified as well.
I just wanna make, cause it, whenever we put something, it's always nice to let the parents know.
Absolutely.
Cause they never read, I hate to say it, they never read the handbook.
Right.
We know.
Right.
But they always complain, where does it say it in the handbook? Page one hundred and twenty. Oh, and that's what usually clicks.
Right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Another question for Mr. Brandigan. So this does need approval by the school committee, so.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve the Middlebar High School handbook, um, as amended and presented this evening for the eighteen nineteen school year.
Mm-hmm. Do I hear a second? All right. Any, uh, discussion on this? And as Mr. Brandigan said, we wanna get this over so they can start the process of getting all these printed. All right, so hearing, oh, student input.
I like what I hear, um, especially the, uh, the unified Bachi and the, the basketball. I'm excited for that next year, just to see where that goes, um, from Bachi on like the MASC level to bringing it home to Middlebar High School. I think that's valuable.
Yep. Uh, I agree. I think that's a really good addition to the course.
Just as a note, we had a lot of interest when we did the fall sports sign up. Um, there were quite a few students who had come to that event and they came to become partners in unified basketball, which was great, so.
Okay. All right, so any other discussion? All right, all of us in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Is it unanimous?
Thank you. And-
Mr. Brandigan is up again to talk about the Middlebar High School accountability plan for, yes, Mr. Givernoni, two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen.
So for the members of the committee, just to give some context of what the accountability plan is, a few weeks ago or months ago, you approved for the high school, our school improvement plan. And that is a document that's vetted by our school council that is made up of teachers and parents and so on. The school accountability plan is very different and it's a very unique document for our school. Um, five years ago, we created our first accountability plan because we knew the significant work we had ahead of us in terms of making and turning our school into a high performance school. And that when we created our accountability plan, it really was led by a guiding question that we established as a staff and that every department and every teacher in the building is committing themselves to what we're holding ourselves accountable for. And in the first year of the plan, it was a very, it was a massive document and since then, every year, it kind of modifies itself based upon the needs at the time. And that each year, I come before you to share with you what we are holding ourselves accountable for, for the eighteen nineteen school year. This is a document that is created by the faculty. So they work within their content areas to ensure the fact, how are they meeting the essential question? How are they creating their guiding questions and then ultimately their goals as well? And that we start the year knowing the fact that this is what we're holding ourselves accountable for. In January of two thousand nineteen, the entire team of what is called the instructional leadership team, which is the gatekeepers of this document, will come together to do a complete analysis of really where are we with our targets? And they then begin the plan of writing the new one. So it's always, you'll find that there'll be goals that kind of mold itself as we move forward and the idea is, are we hitting the percentages? Are we hitting the targets that we want? And just, it's just a really modest, um, sharing out with you of really what these guiding questions are, of really what the accountability plan is. And the faculty voted on this document at our faculty meeting last Thursday. The members of the instructional leadership team have signed off on it to say that this is what we're committing ourselves to. And here's just a brief presentation for it. In the English department, um, you see that the guiding question is really our guiding question that you have seen from us before. It is really, how do we provide instructional resources, personalized support to allow students to acquire, demonstrate, communicate, hone and transfer reading, writing, reasoning skills in order to be college and career ready? This question is the guiding question for everybody. But you're gonna find that every guiding question has modified itself a little bit to really fit the nuances of the department. Um, and the goals for this department this year is really ensuring that we have a hundred percent of our students, um, scoring an advanced proficient in ELA. Um, by the end of the spring semesters, our English department has done a phenomenal job of really nurturing a common rubric, um, of informational and explanatory, um, information. And that that rubric is something that has become really a foundational document for the entire English department. And that is an area that they wanna consistently kind of explore following the literacy plan at the high school. And then lastly, by the end of the semester, that eighty-five percent of the students will completely address all aspects of the problem to the clear thesis statement using the NHS rubric for informational and explanatory rubrics. So ultimately that you're gonna find that literacy is the transcending, um, umbrella over all of the content areas and this is what English is holding themselves accountable for, for the year. And ultimately, what will happen is, is every month of the school year, when the instructional leadership team comes together, they'll be reporting our progress of where they are meeting these goals. In fine arts, you'll see the guiding question that is there. Now, keep in mind that in the arts, that you have three different content areas of the visual arts and music and theater. So this is where they come together to say, this is what we're holding ourselves accountable for regardless of where you go in the arts. Um, that all students will read and write and think like an artist. Um, they'll demonstrate reasoning and informed choices and create original pieces of art. To be able to effectively read and comprehend course level and content specific materials by the completion of the course. Effectively communicate and effectively demonstrate through a writing, um, and understanding of course level and content specific, um, by the completion of the course. So again, they wanna make sure the fact that they understand the fact that no matter where you go in our school, that literacy becomes the target. Because we know that if our students can begin to transfer the skills from content to content to content, it doesn't matter what content you're giving them or what topic you're giving them because the skills are there. In foreign language, this department is, um, ultimately you see their guiding question of building support, um, in the building and district of wide learners to growth goals and while simultaneously enriching all students in foreign language acquisition. That all students in an identified cohort will demonstrate growth in an area of the target language. So that basically they're gonna be looking at each level, so level one, two, three and four, and what is the target they want in that acquisition in that year of their language? And then ultimately, how does that con, um, conform to their common speaking rubric that they share as a, as a content area? Ninety percent of the students in identified cohort will meet or exceed the expectations in the common, uh, English language writing assessments and demonstrate growth between the baseline and summit of assessments. You will find in foreign language that they have an unbelievable, they've done an unbelievable job of creating real common assessments, um, and benchmark exams throughout the entire content area, using power vocabularies, the literacy pla- plan as well as, um, their CER, which is Claim, Evidence and Response, which is our writing protocol. Um, they've really done a nice job of meshing the literacy plan for English and meshing it right into the foreign language department. And lastly, just making sure the fact that they are making a commitment of acquiring eight new twenty-first century learning strategies and implementing those technologies into the classrooms, um, throughout the semester as well. The futures program, um, this department or this program has come so far and that when you see these goals for the program, it really is quite impressive, um, that they have made a target that between ninety and a hundred percent of the students will achieve a proficient rating on their MCAS. Um, they've made a commitment that they will be able to analyze and articulate as they draw conclusions in all of their content areas, to be able to analyze an argument and in addition to be able to understand the concept to construct a meaning. And it's really about them being able to articulate and communicate their goals. And what I love in the last two truly is to be able to communicate in a manner that allows one to both be heard and understood. Um, and ultimately, how are they advocating for themselves as a young adult? And lastly, how do they write a resume and to make sure they're college and career ready, which is huge. In history, um, this is all about how do you, how do you behave as a historian? So when you see the history department, they have taken the literacy plan and they've really put it into the text, um, in the contextual pieces of how do you align the historical content of our framework? But then also how do they read and write and speak and reason as a historian would? And then how do they take those skills and transfer them into the other content areas that you're seeing? And you'll notice the fact for their goals this year, it really is how can they present their, present information, analyze their findings and support the evidence that they're using clearly and concisely and logically? And if you notice, I hope, is that when you see what the cool part about our, the plan that they've created is that there's underpinnings that are attached to each other. So albeit they're creating goals for a content area, all of the plans in some way, shape or form connect back to each other as well. And ultimately, just looking at the common core standards, um, and really looking at what is happening in history. And it doesn't seem to wanna move. There it is. Sorry. In mathematics, um, you'll see their guiding question that is there. I am really proud of where math is going and what their targets are for this year. Really raising the bar of looking at how many of our students will achieve a three or higher on an AP exam, looking at that we will, um, the percentage of NHS students scoring in the proficient and advanced range on the grade ten math MCAS to be at least five percent higher than the state. And you'll notice also the fact that we'll outperform the state in, with our students with disabilities in proficient and advanced. So these are the targets they've created for themselves. And with the significant work they've been doing on preparing students for the SAT, that they wanna make sure they're improving by ten points there as well. And they just have some additional goals as well. This is what I love about when you see the, the, um, the transferability of literacy, of really where mathematics wants to take their engagement of literacy. How, and ultimately also assessment, that this is the department that has become the leaders of our online assessment platform, Edge Elastic, and that they are really the benchmark for all the other content areas. This summer, there'll be significant work done of creating common assessments using an online tool, Edge Elastic, which I know we, we've shared with you before, that will be done in math and science, history and English in the fall and really looking, how do you get real time data as well? But then taking that and then comparing it to really how are our students going to engage with being able to, that seventy percent of our students will demonstrate correct, um, understanding when solving a math problem using speaking. Um, minimum of seventy percent of our students will correctly solve contextual problems using Edge Elastic data and as well as communicating correct mathematical reasoning using sentences and symbolic, symbolic notation measured by Edge Elastic assessment data. This comes directly from our MCAS assessments last year and we were noticing the fact of really where our students needed to be able to have some improvement in terms of how could they explain math? Um, and there was one problem in particular where the students had the entire math problem already done and they had to explain how they got the answer. It wasn't they were computing the problem, they were explaining it. And that was an area of weakness for them. So this is where those goals came from. In PE, um, it's really beginning the transferability of looking at, uh, PE class and really when the PE teachers say it's time to really write or reflect what you've done, um, that's a hard, that's a hard shift for students to have. And you'll notice that in PE, it's really taking the ability of taking their own journey as an, as a student and being able to understand their own development of physical fitness and how do they explain it and think about it and think, think critically about their own journey as a healthy person. And that you'll see in the, in the PE department, the fact that what they're looking to do is make sure that students can articulate their own personal health goals as well. And lastly, the last two that you will see is special education. And in spin, it's really about taking the trainings, the significant training that has been done in special education and infusing it into all facets of our school life. You will notice the fact using baseline data, students will improve their individual abilities in providing evidence to support their thinking in all areas. That special education teachers will embed the strategic intervention model or SIMS training, um, in at least one a week, once a week. And this is certain strategies and note taking that would then be done within the special education program, but also then transferred into the core content areas as well. That each special education teacher will share their professional practices with their colleagues through workshops and so on. And then lastly, um, the last part is using the trainings they've done in empower, um, and the development of, of brainframes to ensure the fact that you can see this throughout all content areas. And lastly, with science and technology, you see their guiding question. And that at least eighty percent of our students in grade nine will achieve proficient and advanced in the two thousand nineteen biology MCAS. We're so close to that benchmark that we wanted to make sure the fact that the department could, could say they met it, um, using an inquiry approach. This is the department that really was the leader in creating our writing model of claim, evidence and response. And they have really taken it to the next level of really how do you create the framework of inquiry and having the students being able to look at aspects of their science standards and to be able to attack it from a way that they're really exploring rather than just regurgitating, which I think is a huge aspect of the science curriculum. And then lastly, for each semester, teachers will make sure that they are deconstructing at least one open response question per unit and outlining the response in a CER. This is huge. And the reason why that it was outlined in the two thousand sixteen draft document and they're transferring it is because we realized the fact this is a very powerful opportunity for students to be able to say, how do you deconstruct an open response in science? And then how can they do that in other content areas as well? So in closing for you, it's really, um, uh, an opportunity for us to share with you what your faculty at the high school has accomplished and really what they're setting their targets on and what they have agreed upon to say, we're holding ourselves accountable for this in their own growth and their own work in the upcoming year. So I can take any questions or comments or concerns you may have.
Thank you, Paul. Mr. Chair, if I could, if you could clarify with Mr. Brandigan. Can you talk a little bit about the process through which this report is done and how it's compiled and, and the format that you use when you identify celebrations and you identify challenges and then you develop SMART goals as a result of that?
Right.
If you could just comment on, on just the process a little bit.
Sure.
We saw the document, but, thank you.
Sure, thank you. We, so in January, every, um, right after the holiday break, we have a full day, um, opportunity for the entire instructional leadership team. And the ILT, as we call them, is made up of the department chairs, so the leadership team of the high school as well as teacher leaders. team of the high school as well as teacher leaders. So in every content area, it may be one or two teachers that really becomes another voice around the table. This team comes together in every, in every January, and the idea and the goal is to start to begin this process. And what they have to do is we always go back to our essential question and to ensure the fact, is this really what we're doing? And does it need to be fixed? Does it need to be tweaked? Or are we really hitting this target and has this become really our, our goal? And then from there, it becomes what you'll see in the plan is it talks about the celebration. It is important for us, you can't write a goal until you go back and say what it actually is that you can celebrate to say you've done it. So in each and every content area, before they write a goal or before they start looking at their percentages, it's really about ensuring what can we celebrate as we're finishing this school year? And this happens at the benchmark time in January because as we start celebrating what we've done, we have to start getting ready to build the next one. You're also going to notice as well, it's also areas of need or areas of focus, we call it. And this really becomes the bench, the foundational pieces for our writing, our SMART goals. That really is the essential piece to this process because as much as we can say to the faculty, we're celebrating what we're doing, we know there's a lot of work that still needs to be done. And that area of focus allows for you to see in the plan where the essential question comes from, which is the main question of the school, to the guiding question for each content area, and then ultimately looking at achievement. What is the ultimate goal that we want to have for our students in terms of what we can achieve? And then really the areas of focus in terms of literacy, of the areas of reading, writing, speaking, and reasoning? And then the action steps come out of that. So albeit you're seeing the goals, in the document itself, it's a much more robust document that really takes the teacher through, alright folks, here's our benchmark. Now here's the other part to this. This is the document that our instructional leadership team will use as their, as their framework in our work in the upcoming year. And for the leadership team proper, their charge has been from me, is that they need to make sure that they're coming back to our table as a leadership team and reporting out where are they in the process? Because we never want to get ourselves to January of 2019 and we're looking at an area saying we haven't even started because that's unacceptable. Because if we're saying we're holding ourselves accountable to it, what is the work that's getting done in the content areas to get them there? There may be roadblocks, and that is part of that work we do in the, in January to say, you know what, we really took on, took on more than what we thought we could do. And here's the reasons why. So instead of just saying they can't do it, we're looking at actually, well, here are some skills they don't have or they need some more work in, then that becomes part of the goal. In January, they leave, we come up with a calendar of benchmarks of being, making sure that by June of the year, the fact that this document is voted on by the faculty and ultimately why it's in front of you.
Mr. Chair, any members, yes? Mr. Giovinoni.
Although this doesn't require a vote, I would, I'll start with a motion to support the Middleborough High School 2018-19 School Accountability Plan.
Any second?
Second.
Mr. Chair?
Discussion, yes? Mr. Giovinoni.
When I went through this plan, what clicks for me, and you kind of touched upon it, is, and you've just said it, is the why. Even when you reflect in January on this plan, each department does that. It's not, you might not, you set the bar high, you go for it, you're trying to get there, there's goals, how to get there, there's a roadmap, you might not be there, but you don't stop. It's why. Maybe the bar's there, maybe it is too high, maybe it isn't. Maybe we tweak something. And that's why when you, when you get, I mean, more than what you presented, when you started getting the in-depth pieces, but as I was reading this, I get chills thinking about it, it just, you really look at those, and I can almost see it, it could, it could just really, it could, it could go to one single student, but it goes to everybody. So I really appreciate the detail that went in this, the math one. I just saw that when I read it, it really knocked me out. Sounds crazy to say it, but when you set up a plan and you have those goals and the way to achieve them, it's doable. And I'm glad they come up with it. So I get, I got really excited about this, and this is one of these documents I do like to see each year. But I just wanted to say that, I appreciate what the teachers have done for all this. Sorry.
Mr. Rowe?
You're Mr. Chair. Mr. Brannigan, what?
And that's very impressive is how the faculty was involved in devising this. This wasn't something that was rolled out by you or Mr. Lynch. This was, these were goals set by the faculty which allow them to, you know, have some ownership of it. And it's very impressive to see where they want to take the students, and I hope they can achieve it. And thank you for letting them do that.
Mr. Brannigan, just a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I was impressed in the, you know, the, I think it's a real honest look. You know, that's what I get from it. It's, you're not trying to sugarcoat anything, you know, there's a real honest evaluation here. Just a couple of quick questions, maybe to clarify. I know SMART for me means specific, measurable, achievable, realistic, and time-based. That's how I learned them. There's a lot of different versions, but I think that's basically it. So on the English, you had a hundred percent passing the MCASTs with either proficient or.
Advanced.
Advanced, thank you. Is that realistic to have a hundred percent?
It is. We were pretty much at ninety-eight percent at a passing rate. And what the target now has become is that they, they know they've, they've hit it, they're there. So the curriculum they have in place, the work that they're doing collaboratively, we're in the zone. But the issue is, is the fact that they now want to start getting more students into the advanced range. So that goal now becomes the ability for them to say they've hit it, that every student is now in advance, in advanced proficient. And now you'll start to see the work that they are doing in the upcoming year is beginning the framework for them to say, now we're starting to move more kids into the advanced range. The proficient is no longer the option, and it's really helping them become the solid writers that they need to be to be able to get there.
Alright, thank you. And another.
Oh, sure. One of the pieces that we looked at, and as I dovetail into that, what you're just saying, is that the breakdown, the disassembling, those long write questions across all subject matters, math, science, arts, everything we're always looking at, even in physical education, that reflection piece. I think that that is, that's going to help that ELA piece get over that top.
Right.
Okay. And the next question, it was on, was actually on the arts piece. That, I mean, maybe it's just a, I wasn't understanding it correctly, but it didn't seem specific measurable where they're. The terminology, I don't know if you want to go back to that screen, but it just, I didn't see a goal that you could measure that I, that I understood.
Sorry. Just take it back.
Like, the first one, all students were reading, think like an artist. Like, I'm not sure how you would be measuring that.
So what was the question?
So I guess my question is, like, a lot of these sound like they're not specific or measurable. And I'm just wondering how to maybe.
Yeah.
Revise them to get them to be that way, or?
So when you look at the action plan proper, that's really where you start to see kind of what the goal is. So for example, and to be able to read and write and think like an artist, it's about the reflection pieces that they're doing and the meaning behind their art. So it may not be they're getting a prompt of, that they may get in history, but it's getting them to be able to move away from, here's my creation, but now where's the why? And the real development of that, and then how this is the rubrics that they're using in the fine arts to be able to transcend that. So the musical pieces, the theatrical pieces, if Mrs. Duggan's doing, you know, Beckett in her theater class, and the students have then, it's going beyond just simply reading the script and then being able to analyze it, it's really getting them to become reflective in their practice. And that really is where their entry point into the literacy plan becomes powerful. When we brought the literacy plan to this committee a few years ago, it was one size fits all, and we realized what a disaster that was because literacy looks very different depending upon what the content is. So what has been really in this year's current plan, that was the work that we did, is say, how do you define literacy in the arts in comparison to math, in comparison to science? And now what you're starting to see is really, what does it mean to be able to think and to read and to write like an artist? And the assignments, and then the responses that they have to do from their artwork, from their theatrical performance, really, that's where you're going to see that kind of evidence if that kind of helps in that.
Okay. Alright, thank you. Okay, so any other comments or questions? So the motion on the table is to support this, even though they don't require a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? So it's unanimous support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brannigan.
Thank you. On behalf of the faculty, we appreciate it.
Mr. Brannigan will continue now with a couple of field trips coming up. One is a Best Buddies field trip on, for a student to be going out to Indiana. And the second is a Festival of Music in Washington, D.C. So, Mr. Brannigan, if you might, please.
Sure, I'll start with the music department. Each year, you've been so kind about approving the annual music department trip to a different location, and Mr. Pittsley and his team have created kind of a rotation of experiences so that the students in the music program will be able to go to a different location and have a different experience. And this particular year, we're heading back to Washington, D.C. The date to April third through the seventh, which crosses over a weekend, so that when you see those dates, it includes a weekend experience, and that we're looking for your support so that when we come back in the fall, that the students can begin their fundraising and to begin their practicing and preparation for that trip as well.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Motion to approve the overnight Washington, D.C. music department trip.
Alright, second?
Second.
Alright, discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Giovinoni.
Where does it fall with exams?
It would be before they, the exams would be upon their return.
Okay. Like, that week right after?
Right. In which, what we do, when those, when the students are identified of those who are going, because you ask a really poignant question, because every year it falls right around that time. And what we've done is that we work with those students and their teachers to ensure, and we always give a buffer day, so the students know it's coming, so we have that preparation on the bus ride or the plane, but then we give the buffer day, so when they come back, they're not walking into an exam on that morning.
That makes sense.
So that kind of.
Mr. Brannigan, I see the cost is $900 per student? And how much of that do you think is achievable to fundraise? Do they typically raise all of it?
Well, I think they've, the boosters for the music department are quite aggressive and progressive in their approach. And I would tell you the fact that I think for the students who really want to raise their money and to be able to fundraise, they make it or pretty, or pretty close to. I know for last year, the Nashville trip was a very different experience because they were flying.
Yeah.
So that had a much more of an expensive ticket price to it. And between all of the fundraising events that they did, I believe it came down enough that it was, became very, it was feasible for families to do. So, and that's why he starts early, so that the fundraising opportunities become significant that it's, the money that they're making is going to be, put a dent in the balance rather than just a, a big sale per se.
Alright. Yeah, some of my best experiences in my life were.
Right.
The high school band trips, so I.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I sold a lot of M and Ms.
Through you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Brannigan, the rotation is, I think they added Nashville into the mix.
Right.
So Nashville, Washington, D.C., New York City.
Right.
And then there's a Canadian trip.
Right, the Montreal trip.
So that seems to be the four.
Yep.
That we're working on, the light, okay, thank you.
And some are competition, so the Nashville trip was not competition, it was learning, and it was more kind of an educational experience of them being able to see the different side of music, where the Washington, D.C. trip is a, is a showcase and they are competing.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Giovinoni.
Mr. Brannigan just touched upon something. The Nashville trip at Vanderbilt, it was very intense, great learning. Chaperones who were on the trip noticed the difference and noticed that whole difference, they talk about it. Mr. Pittsley said the same thing, the noticeable difference in the students. Not to mention the history, there was a lot of history there, and they did get to see a lot of, my son participated, incredible amount of history in Nashville when it comes to music, so.
It's an.
Yeah, just, I mean, great, a great opportunity. There was a nice video of some students singing the National Anthem to a veteran. They were singing up in the balcony. It just, those moments. And I know, like, like you just said, some of those greatest moments in life were probably had on that trip for some of these students. It's a long life, but early, early on, some of the greatest moments. But these trips are, are great. I liked that this, this Washington, D.C. one, the last time they went, some of the photos that came back were the things that they saw that even I haven't seen yet because there's so many new things, and they're going there, so these, these trips are wonderful. And they, and they compete or learn, it's a teachable, it's not just a free-for-all. New York, same thing, so it's been great. These trips are awesome.
Okay. Any other comments or questions about the trip? Okay, this does require a vote. Any other discussion? Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. And?
And a second field. For Indiana.
Sure, this is a new one for our school. This year, we launched a Best Buddies chapter at the high school to really complement the work that we're doing with Special Olympics, and there, we, Ms. Adelman, who is the faculty advisor, we had a really large group of students who wanted to be part of Best Buddies, and this was our inaugural year. In order to be a Best Buddies chapter, you need to be able to send your chapter president to the annual leadership conference, that's a national conference each year. So we've worked with our Best Buddies consultant, who is our regional representative for Massachusetts, and that we were able to secure the opportunity for our chapter president to attend the conference. The student will be traveling as the sole representative from the high school. The student's parent is going to be attending the trip as well, that he wanted to go to just kind of make sure he could accompany. The student would be staying with all of the other Best Buddy chapter presidents from Massachusetts on a college campus, and my apologies, it's off the top of my head, I don't remember which one it is, so my apologies.
Indiana.
Yes, Indiana University, thank you, sorry. Nope, and it's right there. And that it is a weekend of training and celebration of really the work of Best Buddies nationally. And the student, a special thanks for you to know that the Middleborough Parent Advisory Council, M P A C, is sponsoring this young lady to go to this conference, which is wonderful. It'll be a first for Middleborough High School to be able to have representation of the Best Buddies program, so we're quite excited.
And her father is attending the trip with her. It's Sydney Jutrus is the name of the young lady, so.
Yep.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Giovinoni.
Motion to approve the field trip.
There, a second?
Second.
Okay. So another discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Giovinoni.
I'd love to hear something back in the fall about, I would just really love to get about this and the whole program, how it's going.
You bet.
I think all of us.
This is Tom Brady program, I believe. He's one of the chief athletics sponsors of this program, so.
So just to, like, answer my one question, because the form says no chaperone, so I was like, how is that going to work? But that answers that.
The state, the directors for Best Buddies become the chaperones, so the flight that this young lady is going on is the flight that all of them are going on.
Okay.
So we secured the plane ticket there, but the student's parent just opted, I think we want to go just to kind of be a part of that and, but also experience it as well because there's been a lot of work put in by this chapter president and the membership of really building the Best Buddies program, so it will officially launch next fall, or this fall, excuse me. So this year was the building, and the fall of eighteen becomes its real official launch.
So, yeah, so, and maybe I missed it, but how was Sydney Jutrus, is that her name?
Yep.
How was she selected for that?
So it was an open meeting for all students to be able to go to Best Buddies, and just through the work that the chapter decided that Sydney would become the president of Best Buddies. And because she serves as the president, the president is the person who goes as the Best Buddies representative for the national conference.
Sounds wonderful. Thank you.
That's good.
Any other questions for Mr. Brannigan? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Brannigan.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Brannigan. Back to my report. We're going to back up a little bit here and go back to number three, the Department of Energy Resources, and the school choice update, and both of these will be provided by Mrs. Kathy Pietelli.
Thank you.
Thank you. We just wanted to update you on our lighting upgrade this summer. That's the Green Communities Grant through the Department of Energy Resources. We signed a contract with MV Electrico. The supply list has been approved by a maintenance department. Mr. Hutchinson and Scott Beach, our district electrician. The work is scheduled to begin on July 9th over at the complex. All of the summer programs have been relocated. Mr. Hutchinson has worked with the head custodians at the complex to organize their work schedules, so that they can kind of stay ahead of the, the project. They're gonna go left to right, so they'll stepway over to HBB and move down, so they'll be able to be finished, because the project is gonna end, or should end, August 17th, which is pretty late into the summer. So they need to get all the rooms cleaned at the same time, so they'll be working in unison. I've been working with Andrew at the town manager's office on the paper for the grant to get the funding set up. And I've also been exchanging phone calls with Sandy Richter at Middleborough Gas and Electric, because they're also funding a portion of this for us, and they have certain procedures and paperwork they need from us. So it's all going according to schedule for us right now, and pretty hopeful that it will start on July 9th. If anyone has any questions?
Questions for Ms. Piattelli? Chair? I had mentioned at the selectman's meeting, when they, when Mr. Stevens was at it, about this, and it was a little misquote, that they were talking about this building, and they tried to rectify it, I don't know if it got rectified online, but they, I had said the complex, the Berklin and the Mayflower complex, but it's okay. It's a great program.
When I, when I saw that, Mr. Jovanoni, I immediately sent a note to Eileen Reese, the author of that article. And just to clarify, I said, he may have been misquoted, you may have misheard him, but it is the HBB and the MKG as opposed to the HBB and an NMS. She was on vacation, she did reply, she said, I'm sorry, but, but I let them know that they need to correct it, and I believe they did online, so.
Right, yeah, and it's, the, the big thing is, is one of the pieces that I mentioned is, having this kind of money in the grant, really put it, put this project in the front for us.
Absolutely.
And as I tried to explain, it, it would've been a tough project for us to undertake if we didn't have the grant.
Right, oh, absolutely.
There's a lot of other things, but doing it all at once, it really saves us time and effort, doing multiple mobilizations, et cetera. I tried to explain that to her, so.
Yeah. And we, not to interrupt Kathy, but Mrs. Piattelli, but we did, we certainly appreciate Evan Malillo, who has gone now, but he's gone to Harwich, but Andrew Sukforth has taken over for him, MHS grad, and he did great work on this initial grant application. We also appreciate the cooperation of Seth Pickering, who's the, lives in Middleborough, but he's also the regional director of the Department of Energy Resources. And we certainly, I know she mentioned Jim Hutchinson, but Jim has been key in this too, so.
Yep.
That was informational.
The next report is on school choice, and we wanted to give you an update of where we are right now and where we're headed next year. And it just so happened that the state published our final numbers for this past year. We received 36 choice in students, and choice out was 55. They send you both lists, so 55 of Middleborough students are attending school elsewhere. And as Mr. Lynch and I just went over the list today, and 19 of the 55 going out are attending TECA, the online school, Commonwealth of Massachusetts online school, so.
The Commonwealth provides it as a service, and then...
But it's considered school choice.
Charges us for it.
So, that was kind of...
So, in terms of, you take those out, but not where Steven?
So, the numbers, exactly. We used to be 67 to 3.
Yep.
Outgoing versus incoming. And now we're even at 36, 36, outside of those 19 TECA, Mava kids, so.
Which is great.
Come a long way.
I think it's been a great program. I, you know, I've talked to people that, it just gives options to families. You know, it might be in a situation, they can have their kids go to school here. It's great.
And opening it up to the other grades besides the high school has really started to fill in on those classes as well.
Filled up those five kindergarten spots.
Yep, they're done, yep. So next year, we're, we have 28 returning students, and we have seven that have already registered and received their letter from Mr. Lynch accepting them. So we're at 35 right now. So, yeah, we're about one more, and we're even.
Great, great work.
Good. Thank you. And if anyone has any questions?
I suppose, I mean, we'll re, we'll redress, we'll address that issue as it comes. If we need more spots opened up, we can have that discussion through the...
Yeah, the only place we're maxed out right now is the kindergarten. Everything else is still a little bit of breathing room, so we still have room for more expansion. And you never know, usually, school choice, a lot of things happen over the summer, with people moving out and wanting to continue at the high school, the Nichols. And we have more options now, thanks to the school committee vote and acceptance of school choice, really K through 12.
I think the kindergarten's where we wanna be most careful, because that's 12 years of a commitment.
Right.
It is, absolutely.
Versus one or two years, so.
But it goes with that class. So we need to identify that incoming class, which is tricky with kindergarten too.
Yep.
Because a lot of folks will register, they're going through the traditional registration, but then a lot of other folks who say, oh, Johnny's five, I gotta get him to kindergarten. So we're trying to alleviate that by sending out more notices and letting folks know, but that definitely is something that, that we're doing more of, to try to get a more accurate number on those class sizes as we progress forward. But it is, it is the wild card in terms of the choice, the school choice is that kindergarten registration class. And we don't want to overburden a kindergarten, where we reduced the number of teachers last year through the budget process, but we also added ESPs. So each of our kindergarten classes has a full-time teacher and an ESP, and many of them get special education support also in the inclusion settings, so.
Okay. That's it for your report?
That concludes my report, Mr. Stevens, thank you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Lynch. So now, the next up is the MSBA update discussion about the Middleborough High School project, if either Brian or Brian wanna...
I will certainly add some comments, and Sir Brian can also. We've been progressing forward. We've had a working group meeting, we have the full meeting next week. And we continue to provide updates. We've had the architects, the DAR has been down, working with Mr. Brannigan. Boy, almost every other day or so, sometimes every day, working with him, and he and his teachers and his faculty and the staff, and working with the cafeteria folks, and working with the athletic department folks, talking about phasing, talking about equipment, talking about technology, security, all the above. So flooring, furniture, we've talked to the engineer for flooring and design. She was at our last working group meeting. And so that next meeting is next Wednesday evening at 5:00 at the Town Hall Selectmen's Office. So anyone and everyone are welcome to go to that with questions, comments, concerns, or just to listen and get a progress report as to where the high school project is. I know there's an intention at this point to attend crazy days, both crazy days, with new flats and new designs, with a 60% submission that is due in soon, at the end of July, July 18th. And then we will be, we'll have a new set of prints, so that folks can stop by over the two-day crazy days and sort of get updates one-on-one with the chair, myself, Mr. Jovanoni, Mr. Young, and any other committee member that wants to attend, Mr. Piattelli, Mr. Hutchinson. So in, we'll be in and out of the booth for those two days, so if folks wanna come up and talk about the high school project, we'd be more than happy to do that at that time. It's always been an open process, continues to be an open, transparent process, and that'll be all the way through.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Chair?
Yeah, Mr. Jovanoni.
All the information is located online, mhsbuildingproject.com. There are even links to some of our old meetings up there, so come on down, look at the design, the design, you hit the design tab, and the latest one's sitting right there. And that was the one that was submitted back in April, I believe it was April 18th or 19th, we submitted that one to MSBA, Mass School Building Authority. And the next one, like Mr. Lynch was touching upon, the next submittal is the 60% design. 60% design is due the middle of July, July 18th. And then, we're still on track for bidding it this fall in November.
Yeah, I was gonna say, bidding should start, and then?
Hopefully mild, if it's mild enough. The winter stays mild, construction in February.
Yeah, late January, early February.
Nice, yeah, great.
Mr. Rowe has a question.
Mr. Rowe?
Here, Mr. Chair. Having attended one of the building committees, I was very impressed with their discussions on the safety of the building. Now, that is one thing that may not be as transparent as the other avenues for security reasons, but just from your experiences on the committee, how has the design team taken recommendations of Chief Perkins, the DIRTT team, and so forth?
I believe that, I mean, he has been part of a number of meetings, his police officers have been part of the meetings, fire department have been part of the meetings, and talking about traffic circulation, talking about in and out of the exits. They're very pleased with the alternative exit we'll have in the new high school. That was, that was a part of that, right from the beginning, they wrote a letter of support for that, with that vote that occurred just about a year ago, where we bought that extra nine-acre parcel. That was important. Since then, they have worked with the committee, they have worked with the engineers, traffic engineers and otherwise. And talking about building security is something that they've been very much in tune with. DAR does have a traffic engineer, and they have a security unit, technology, engineer piece. The police were very instrumental in designing the lobby of the new building, and how that is working, and how that's going to work. They're very instrumental in designing the fact that we have certain entrances that will be open at different, certain times, and not open other times. So, security has been certainly something that has been of great concern. Police and fire have been involved. The traffic piece, we're still working on a couple of little pieces, access to offer Route 28. We're trying to get as much traffic off of Route 28 as we possibly can, and may need some help from, from the, from the engineers, from the State Department, give me the Department of Transportation?
DEP.
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 DOT.
So many acronyms.
Mr. Jovanoni.
One of the items, I specifically asked an item, and I won't say what it is, because it's real specific. And I have to admit, I asked it, I asked a question more generally about something, and I had a ten-minute response about how they're securing a certain feature. And I was, I was very impressed with that response, because it's something that has been recognized as a failure point in other situations around the country. I was very happy with that. And one of the other safety pieces that has been incorporated was the flashing crossing, crosswalk light. It sounds foolish, I was really on top of that, because I, I really wanted it, because at the high school, there is none, and that's an east-west road, that sometimes during the day, you just can't see coming over the hill, you know, so I had, I had wanted, and it was incorporated, it sounds, it's a $5,000 item that was, I thought was, was very important to make sure people can see that that crosswalk exists, and it really flashes, and I've seen it in other communities, and it works in other communities, which is great. So, very responsive on security, safety items, yeah. I, I feel more comfortable that they're on top of that.
Mr. Piattelli?
Since we've started the construction phase of this building part, the design part, we've received back a million two from the state on the invoices that we've paid out after the feasibility study. So, it's, it's nice that it's working like monthly.
Good, good, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, so now we're on to consent, consent agenda. So this, does any committee member have anything they want to pull out of consent? I think it's just five warrants.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on these? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? It's unanimous. Consent agenda is approved. All right, the rest is just some informational items. We, the MASC, Massachusetts Association of School Committees, they're having their summer institute, the dates are actually different, they're the 20th through the 21st. I think those are last year's dates on there now, which it makes me happy, because I think I can go. So the July 20th, 21st, I found it very helpful, any committee member wishing to go, talk to Chairman Young, and he will take care of it. The November annual meeting is the 7th and 10th of November, and I believe there was like an early bird registration rate, so...
It's July 15th, early bird.
So if anybody's interested in that, the earlier, the better on that. That's like a Wednesday through Saturday, I believe.
Yeah, yep.
And charting the course, I heard both you guys attended? Okay, nice.
How was it?
Very informational.
Do you understand the formula yet? No, it doesn't. I don't even think the state does.
Yeah, the half hour on the state formulas, that was a little rough to get through.
I loved it.
Yeah.
That's me.
I kept asking, is that the number? No, it's not the number. Is that the, no, that's not the number. Good, I'm glad you guys attended. There will be a school committee workshop on operating protocols. Mr. Chairman Young will be sending some kind of doodle, whatever dates that we can all agree upon, to talk about our operating protocols. Superintendent Subcommittee, Superintendent Goals, is it Megan and Greg, I think are on that. So they'll be meeting over the summer sometime, as will, as will the Policy Subcommittee will be meeting over the summer. We did the, oh...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would move that we approve the summer meetings for us here at the Nichols Middle School on, for July 26th, 18, and August 23rd, 2018.
Second?
Second.
All right, discussion, so...
Can we clarify time?
Yeah, clarify time is 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM.
At the, at the same location?
It, um, does, does anyone want it earlier? Does anyone have a problem with a little earlier?
Oh, you mean time-wise?
Time-wise, like at 6:00 o'clock. It may be tough for me, but for others, it may make it easier for some other people.
Those, I don't see...
Pleasure to the committee.
You wanna make it earlier?
Seven's fine.
Seven, ten would've been fine today.
Okay, unless, unless somebody has a reason to change it, I'd say...
No, I would change it, I'm sorry.
Let's keep it at seven. So just...
Seven o'clock.
Yeah, so we slow down a little bit in the summer, we're only having one meeting per month.
Yep.
But the August 23rd is happening, the orientation is happening around that same time, I think, right?
Yep.
So it'll go fast. Okay, so there's a motion on the table for the July 26th, July, August 23rd. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. So our next school committee meeting will be July 26th at 7:00 PM here.
Mr. Chair?
We did the field trips already, and then you want, go ahead, Mr. Jovanoni.
I wanna, I wanna wish Carol Ann Plasky ESP and Susan Kugel, good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, and the field trip, there's a field trip, Nichols Middle School's going to the HBB, MKG complex. We don't have to approve that. And the donations, we already thanked Wayne Christian and the UU Church for their generous support of the school lunch overdue account.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair?
Second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? It's unanimous.
You got it.